Okay.
I mean, once I gave it to her, I never made it again because she makes it all the time. So but I'm sure I have it. Okay, so we're about five minutes away. We're doing good. It sounds like we have everybody online with us. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 1, 2022, and the time is 5:00 p.m. The regular meeting of the following will come to order. The Victorville City Council and the same council also sitting as the Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, the City as Housing Asset Successor, Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Madam Clark, will you kindly call the roll?
Councilmember Matarra.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Irving.
Present.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
We have.
All right. Yes, thank you very much. All right. And so before continuing on and as a friendly reminder, everyone please keep your mic muted until it's time for you to speak. And so with that said, before I move on to the introduction to public comments, Madam Clark, are there requests to speak on closed session items?
Madam Mayor, I have no requests.
All right, will you kindly set the timer for 30 seconds to assist members of our Zoom audience experiencing technical difficulties so that they may provide a public comment should they desire?
Madam Mayor, 30 seconds has lapsed and I have no speakers.
All right. With that said, the public comment period is now closed and the chair brings the item back to the council. We're going to move on to the declaration of closed session items. Mr. Deportnowski, any declarations to make?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jones. We have one item this evening. It is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9d4. And that is one potential case, and we need to decide whether or not the council wants to initiate litigation at this point. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Deportnowski. With that said, we are now in recess to closed session. We will resume our open session at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, very good. And Madam Clerk, do we have all council members present with us?
I don't see Councilmember Gomez, but I do see it says Congressional Candidate 23 Gomez, and I don't know if that's her or not.
That should not be our council member because that would look a little bit like campaigning. So if that is her, I would hope that she would amend the title on it for the sake of our city. Okay, well, we're going to begin in just a moment. All right, well, good evening. Today is Tuesday, February 1, 2022, and the time is 6:00 PM. We are resuming the regular session of our regular meeting, the following of which will now come to order. The Victorville City Council and the same council also sitting as the Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and the REL Authority by my apologies, Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, the City of Housing Assets Successor, Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Becerra.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez. Mayor Pretem Irving.
Present.
Mayor Jones.
Here. Right, it sounds like we have a quorum, and just as a, before we move on, as a friendly reminder, everyone, please kindly keep your mics muted until you're called or until you're ready to speak. All right, with that said, Mr. D. Portnowski, do you have any closed session announcements to make?
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Yes, we do have an announcement this evening. We went into closed session pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4 to discuss the possibility of initiating litigation. The Council, on a vote of three to one with Councilmember Gomez voting no, has essentially approved initiating litigation through an interpleter action to determine the rights between Attorney Rafferty and Attorney Schenckman as to who is entitled to compensation under the California Voting Rights Act.
All right, thank you. All right, with that said, we're now going to move on to our invocation with Pastor Dane Davis of Impact Christian Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our police captain, John Wickham. Pastor Davis, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jones.
Welcome.
Psalm 127, "Unless the Lord builds the house, its builder's labor in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchmen stand guard in vain. In vain you rise early and stay up late, toiling for food to eat; for God grants sleep to those he loves." Please join me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for being with each of us as we take on the difficult tasks of building our own families and the difficult tasks, Lord, of leading our city and our community. Lord, I just thank you for each and every one of our council members, each of the city staff, Lord, who are present tonight. Lord, during this difficult time of COVID, Lord, we thank you for giving them health.
Pastor Davis, did we lose you? All right, so we're going to take everything that we heard thus far in a prayer for our health and guidance, and then amen to that, and we're going to move on to Police Captain John Wickham for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and please stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Captain Wickham, and thank you, Pastor Davis. All right, with that said, Madam Clerk, will you kindly present the agenda and any revisions there, too?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no revisions to the agenda, and it does look like we have Councilmember Gomez back.
Oh, good, very good. Welcome, Member Gomez. All right, do any council members have conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none and seeing no movement toward that, we're going to move on to the introduction to public comments. Before I do that, Madam Clerk, do we have requests to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, all right, well, everyone, welcome to tonight's council meeting, and I'd like to, first of all, take a moment to mention that February is Black History Month, and the city of Victorville will be celebrating this special time on our social media. We invite you to join us in recognizing the significant contributions Black Americans have made to our country, including the Black Civil Rights Leaders who are honored in our Civil Rights Memorial here at City Hall. We remember, we respect, and we honor those who changed our nation for the benefit of all people. And on that note, please know your city council is interested in your ideas and opinions and furthermore endeavors to incorporate them into its deliberations. At the same time, the council must be able to carry out its business in an organized and efficient manner free from material disruption. Therefore, this meeting will be administered in accordance with the council's established policies and procedures and Government Code Section 54957.9. Individuals may speak on agenda items or on issues not posted on the agenda during the public comment section, provided those issues are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Individual speakers may address the council once per public comment period and once per each public hearing item for up to three minutes. Additional time may be allocated for appeal hearings in accordance with the city's adopted policy and procedures manual. All testimony is to be directed solely to the council. Although open meeting laws do not permit council members to engage in dialogue with any speaker during the public comment periods, please know your comments and questions may be taken into consideration by council members when discussing the particular agenda item. The presiding officer may briefly respond or have staff respond to statements or questions or may request that the staff report back to the council at a subsequent meeting. Speakers are requested to comment as briefly as the subject permits. Individual council members who speak as a member of the public do so without the semblance or presumption of authority derived from her public office and are subject to the same meeting rules of conduct as other public participants. Once comments are invited, the speaker will be called on by name, then recognized by the presiding officer. The speaker will state the item number or numbers that will be addressed or that the subject is a non-agendized matter. Your cooperation and your understanding are appreciated in all of this. And with that, Madam Clerk, any requests?
Yes. Our first speaker is Roger LaPlante.
Good evening, Mr. LaPlante.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak under my First Amendment right tonight. El Shalom, Salakum. That's to the family of one of the hardest working men that I've ever known, Levi Linette. May God comfort you.
Mr. LaPlante.
In the mourners of Zion and Jerusalem. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I'm kind of emotional. I wanted to put that on the front of my list.
Yes, sir.
Because it deserves to be there.
Yes, sir.
God bless you, Levi. Hug your kids today. Life is a gift. I just want to thank the Victorville Social Security Office tonight for helping me in a two-year-long battle to maintain my and this is for the city council's information because this office does a great a great job for the citizens of this county. And you should promote whatever you can for Social Security there. But yeah, they helped me they helped me with my pension that I earned in combat over in Iraq. Some grifter people types are trying to, you know, hack away at stuff like that. And I do diligence on what is rightfully our benefits as workers in this country. And Levi was one of the hardest workers I've ever met. I have a couple of different items. I think it's item eight and item 14. Body worn cameras are a necessity. I've been assaulted by, I'm not going to name the law enforcement agency that did it, but it was during the terrorist attack. but it was during the terrorist attack interview, and I was assaulted by a deputy, or I think it was, I think it was a police department employee. But if he had that camera on, he wouldn't be doing that kind of nonsense. We need to make sure our officers wear these cameras. This is, they are our employees, and that's just very important to make sure that we let our citizens know that. And my next item is, we're asking for $1 point, or $48,000 in professional advice. Why do we have a city manager? We have to borrow, take taxpayers' dollars and get advice to run our city. Why do we have a city manager?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaPlante, and our condolences certainly to you and Emily Weiss, friends and family. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Blanca Gomez.
Good evening, Ms. Gomez, speaking as a member of the public.
Yes, there's a couple of comments that I'd like to state that I heard that were new as the mayor was reading them. One of them was the fact that the mayor did use the word "her" public office. I think that's sexist, and we need to change that language because we can have council members that are men, especially when it's being read out, and we don't want to target any female because it's her. So I think that language needs to change. It's been documented as stated if the, as Ms. Jones read the information. The other thing that I heard was new is the Brown Act. At one point, I heard that the Brown Act would prohibit council members from responding to the public, and I knew that was never true. So I'm glad that now it has been altered and modified to state that council members can respond to agenda items when they are, because the Brown Act has always stated that, so that language is welcomed. And the third thing that I like to bring to the attention is also the misinterpretation of the reading of the closed session, the closed session for what we had today. On item A says, "Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation," and it has a code section, and it has language that says, "Based on existing facts and circumstances." And it says, "The legislative body of the local agency has decided to initiate or is deciding to initiate whether deciding whether to initiate legal, initiate litigation." From the perspective of an audience member that reads this information, it almost makes it seem like the local municipality of City of Victorville somehow is going to enter into litigation because an external entity that's also a legislative body will be creating an action of that sort. But that was not the case, so maybe the verbiage would change there. It's essential because we want more participation of the public, and it's really essential to have that. The other thing is that I would like to address in terms of body cam. Just, I'm looking at item 14, body worn cameras, and it says it's only for information. And we have billings of this from an exchange, air exchange. And then it has an exhibit of prevailing wages provisions, and then a sole source, which doesn't really speak to body cams, and I don't know if it would have been clear that we're just getting this information from the county, and it's not that we're making any decision to stop any type of excessive use of force through the evidence of a body cam. And so maybe if that would have been part of the blurb in here, it would have allowed us to understand that body cams is something that we're going to discuss, but based on the evidence that we're showing on facts exhibiting here, it's just, it doesn't show any of that. So we need more clarity on that. It's not that we're talking about body cams and there's no presentation, there's no discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Madam Clerk.
There are no additional speakers.
All right, so there being no further requests to speak, will you kindly set the timer for 30 seconds? And this will allow any member of our Zoom audience who would like to speak but is having difficulty, technical difficulties, this will give them the opportunity to overcome those challenges.
Madam Mayor, 30 seconds has left, and there are no additional speakers.
All right, well, with that said, the public comment period is now closed, and the chair brings the item back to the council. We're now going to move on to our next business in order, which is the Consent Calendar Items 1 through 6. This time, a motion is in order for the council, and the council acting on its various boards of directors to approve action on Consent Calendar Items 1 through 6 in accordance with the recommendations presented on the agenda. Is there a motion?
Councilwoman would like to make that motion.
Is that Member Gomez?
Yes.
Thank you. We have our first by Member Gomez. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, and we have a second by Mayor Protem Irving. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So the council and the council acting in its various capacities on the Boards of Directors has taken action in accordance with the recommendations as presented on the agenda. We're now going to move to our next business in order, which is written communications, beginning with item number seven, and that is the additional assessment for the Public Entity Risk Management Authority, that's PERMA, General Liability Program. Mr. Metzler, will you introduce the item, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, as a public agency, we choose to self-insure and pool our assets with other public agencies for the purposes of writing insurance to the city. And the types of programs that we participate under the insurance pool, which we do call PERMA, we do contribute to them and rely on them for general liability, employment practices, liability insurance, and for workers' comp. And annually, through the budget process, we include in our budget a line item effectively to basically provide our contribution to PERMA, which they use those contributions to then fund the pool and offset any liabilities that are incurred. The calculation for those amounts are typically actuarially based, and so there's some deep analysis as to cost to provide the service, there's forecasts as to what the risks are. And so with that, working with PERMA, we've identified, and largely because there's been an experience of much larger payouts for insurance claims than what was forecasted in some of the actuarial analysis. A true-up effectively has occurred with PERMA to where they've identified a shortfall in their liability program. And this is affecting us, but not just us, it's also affecting other member agencies to PERMA. So with that, we've identified for Victorville a shortfall of about $2.4 million. We've been able to bring that amount down by using funds that have been surplus from previous years, along with dividends paid through PERMA, to where we've identified an actual liability of just over $1.1 million needing to be made to PERMA to help keep the insurance pool whole and properly funded at a, and even higher liability factor. So with that, the author on this item is Sophie Smith. It's co-authored by our risk manager, Mr. Lee Brown. Both of them are available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metzler. All right, Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation?
At the Honorable City Council, Adopt Resolution 22-011, approving the payment of an additional assessment to the Public Entity Risk Management Authority in the amount of $1,109,497, and Adopt Resolution 22-012, approving an additional appropriation in the amount of $1,109,497 for such payment.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're going to move on to technical questions for clarification as it relates to the staff report, and we're going to begin with Member Becerra.
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Member Gomez.
Yes, there was, the city clerk read an amount that was quite large, and I want to understand, where is this amount being withdrawn from? Like, not necessarily the accounts, but is it from employee funds? Is it, you know, where is this dollar coming from?
This additional appropriation being sought in this action is actually being sought from the city's general fund.
Okay, um, does, since it's coming from the general fund, did you say we have a surplus also in the general fund?
No, the surplus that I was speaking to was a surplus that was held on hand at PERMA based upon the performance of prior years and was held in account with PERMA. So effectively, those amounts that were held in account in surplus due to prior year performance, that's actually being used to offset the $2.4 million shortfall.
And from the general fund, do we also use monies there to pay for PERS?
PERS is stretched across the 85 or 86 funds that we manage here throughout the city. PERS is, of course, the pension for all employees. And so because employees, not all employees, are charged to the general fund, PERS costs are stretched over a variety of funds based upon where employees are serving.
And if, is this our only option to withdraw from general funds? And if that's, that is the case, potentially, what can be at stake if we do this amount? If we're not anticipating by the end of the year to have revenues to do that coverage?
So as a part of the fiscal analysis, we do do that analysis to determine whether or not a fund, in this case, the general fund, can actually afford the cost. That fiscal analysis that we've done is showing us that we have flexibility in the general fund to pay for these costs. Otherwise, we wouldn't be bringing the recommendation forward to draw from the general fund in this particular case. And then finally, though not as a part of this action, but typically what we do as a part of the annual budgeting process, these types of costs get factored into a cost allocation model, which we won't do a cost allocation again until the next budget year. But these will get factored in as costs to be then spread out over the multitude of funds that we manage.
My next question is, in regards to the analysis, was the analysis based on data collected, and if so, what predictable statistical analysis were done? Did we collect any quantifiable or qualifiable data to be able to assert an analysis as you said was done?
To answer the question of data, yes, we do rely on data to perform the analysis. I think simply put, in this particular case, we run cash flow models, which are basically studying revenue expenditure and net cash available to handle these types of expenses.
Thank you. And then recently, we allowed a delegate, the risk manager, and the human resource to be an alternate. I just want to understand, why is the city council able to vote on something like this? And how does that outside of the scope of the city manager, if it is without the scope, you know, it's not within the scope? And why are we seeing it as a council?
Well, this is being brought specifically to you because it requires an additional appropriation of funds that were not contemplated as a part of the original budget. The council typically handles appropriations for PERMA despite it not actually serving in a board seat capacity to PERMA. The city council actually participates in the funding of PERMA through its budgetary process. This just happens to be a time where PERMA has done an analysis of its funds and determined shortfalls, and for it to continue to operate at the higher confidence level, these funds are what's required to properly fund their insurance pool.
Okay, and with this amount that's going to be allotted tonight, how would, how can we recuperate or have the least amount of damage being done for anything that could be paid off general fund that was not something that we thought about in the fiscal year for this year? Or last year?
Well, we still rely on the budget to be our performance measure, and the budget is our spending plan. And so we certainly have the ability to operate within that. We rely on that as the backstop to make sure we don't spend more than what we've budgeted, both on the expense and revenue side. And that's why, in this particular case, as we're asking for the additional appropriation, we went through an additional analysis, a recasting, if you will, of the general fund to determine, based upon current revenue levels, based upon current expenditure levels, based upon current net cash available position. That's the analysis that we go through to determine that, whether or not we can still afford this item, and in this particular case, we can.
Were any of the savings touched in order to make this possible for the general funds?
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. You can go ahead and answer it if you've got the question.
Yeah, I think the question was, did we, are we relying on savings to fund this? And that's one way to put it. It's basically the net cash available in our general fund that's being relied upon to make the expenditure.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Protem Irving.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Metzler, so I understand that we are, you are requesting additional appropriation to fund the liability program at a greater confidence level. But let me ask you a question. I was just trying to wrap my mind around this. If we approve this item tonight, or this approval, do we expect some cost savings somewhere? I think I heard that in the conversation between you and Councilwoman Gomez. Is that what I, is that what I heard?
Not exactly. The savings I mentioned in the previous conversation with Councilmember Gomez was more so relating to prior year's experience and based upon prior year's activity where we made contributions in prior years. It's likely that the liabilities in those prior years weren't as great as what was expected, and that effectively creates the savings. And we had many years in the past where savings were effectively carried forward in an account, basically. And that's what's being used to help reduce this collective liability of $2.4 million. I think going forward, the way I would answer that, could we expect savings going forward? I would say you can't really expect savings because it's highly dependent upon what liabilities the pool might realize. In saying it differently, this is dealing with each and every time we get sued as a public agency. We have an SIR, which is basically a deductible for claims of $50,000. And after that $50,000, that's when the insurance program kicks in and say it was a suit for some type of accident out on our public right of way. If there's, if there's a settlement or even a judgment resulted against the city, then it becomes the pool that's responsible for paying that settlement or that judgment. And what we've been experiencing is those settlements, those judgments have been greater than what we've been predicting. So to answer the question about savings going forward, the only way I could foresee a potential savings is say, if at the 80% confidence level that we're currently going to be funding to, let's say, for example, we don't have any losses resulting from judgment or from settlement, then effectively you could get savings that way, just like we did in the past, and you can carry those forward. But it's hard to say that we can expect it until we really, you know, go through the time.
I understand. I misunderstood what you were saying. That's why I followed up with the question. How is that possible? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. So I just want to make sure that I understand it as well. So when we're funding to this, it's based on our projections on reasonable data and reasonable assumptions. Is that fair to say that?
Yeah, I just want to be clear. It's not exactly our assumptions. We do rely on PERMA. They do retain a specialist in this field, an actuarious, but yeah.
Yes, but I mean, it's not an exact science, right? So it's, it's, it's not unheard of that this kind of situation happens. It's just that for us, it seems like a large figure, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. With that said, um, then the chair invites a motion from the council.
Oh, moved, Madam Mayor. Follows staff's recommendation.
Second.
All right, so we have a first by Member Becetta, a second by Mayor Potem Irving. We're going to take discussion on the pending motion, beginning with the major member Becetta.
No discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem.
No discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
Uh, yes, just maybe going forth, um, I'm not sure if PERMA is going to be seeing something like this and it was related with COVID. But hopefully, um, we can get a little bit more information because I felt it was kind of like abrupt and not as informative as, you know, maybe someone would have liked to. Although the presentation did did help with a lot of the understanding, so I appreciate that portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez. And the chair has um no discussion and closes that discussion period. Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Irving.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so the council has taken action in accordance with the recommendation laid out on the agenda. Moving on to item number eight, this is the consultant professional services provider agreement with Harrison Associates Incorporated. Mr. Metzler, will you tee up the item?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, this item is a a new agreement for similarly natured services that were covered under um a a previous agreement with Harrison Associates. This is specifically for specialized work associated with continuing dis- the preparation of continuing disclosure reports, which are uh continuing responsibilities we have under all of the bond indentures uh that we've participated in. And and the bonds that we have outstanding are either Southern California Logistics Airport Authority bonds or former redevelopment agency bonds that now fall under the 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 authority of the successor agency. Uh, we have a compliance requirement to do these reports annually and publish them to a a system uh that avails, uh basically serves as a repository for all public in- information to investors that that may be interested in these types of bonds. A lot of specialized calculations go into these reports. And because Harrison Associates has uh been uh the expert for us in doing these uh complex uh calculations is why we're bringing this item forward, similarly natured contract uh to uh approve additional services with Harrison Associates. The author on this item is your deputy city manager, Miss Sophie Smith. She's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, the recommendation, please.
That recommends that the city council and board of directors approve a consultant professional services provider agreement with Harrison Associates, Inc. for fiscal consulting services relative to Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, an amount not to exceed forty eight thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to questions for clarification, we're going to begin with Member Gomez.
Yes, um, is this simply a new contract agreement or an update of the former contract with the consultant?
This is actually a new contract.
I I'm sorry, you cut off. You said something about a contract. Would you mind repeating?
It's a new contract.
New, okay. The next question is, um, for fiscal consulting services, um, do we not use already an auditing service or is that just a complement to it? I just didn't quite understand.
Uh, audit auditing is a is a much different specialized uh uh service or more so related to the accounting field. This has a lot more to do with um uh doing tax calculations to determine coverage ratios and capability to make debt service payments.
Okay, so then it probably wouldn't be pertinent to be hearing anything from HDL since this is very specialized?
Uh, I you're correct. Uh, you would not hear from HDL on this item.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
All right, thank you, Member Gomez. Mayor Potem Irving.
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my question has been answered. Uh, I thought we were expanding the scope of work, but this is a brand new contract. Uh, when did it terminate? Did it terminate this month?
I I can answer that, Mr. Metzler. The last contract that was approved last year expired on June thirtieth of twenty one. And so this contract will cover the services needed for this year's continuing disclosure work, and that started in December. So this contract start would be retroactive to December first of twenty one and go through June thirtieth of twenty two.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is that in the backup material or no?
Um.
It is. Can you just tell me what page? I I'm sorry, because I didn't see that.
There's just mention that it already expired, not the month it expired.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, the the mentions on page one forty six, right in the middle.
All right, was that it for you, Mayor Potem? Mayor Potem, did you have anything further?
Uh, no, ma'am. Thank you so much. I I was just getting it together. Thank you. Okay.
You, Member Becetta.
Thank you, Madam Bear. Um, I just have a question. Mr. Metzler, does Harrison Associates give us sometimes a third party information? Neither against us, for us. They're never always in our corner, correct? They give us advice for and against of what we get with them about?
Um, I would compare that uh that comment more so to what an au- independent auditor uh would serve us. Uh, in this particular case, they are independent in in the sense that they have to independently calculate uh and and report the information, um, but not in an auditing sense, if if that's what you're asking.
No, no, what I'm, what I mean is, so if we give them, I'm looking at Old Town Zero Formation. If we ask them to check on something and it's not in the best interest of the city, they're going to tell us it's not in the best interest for the city, correct? They're not just going to go with the flow.
Uh, they have to just, yeah, correct.
Okay, so they're not, they're not going to tell us what we want to hear. They're going to tell us what we need to hear.
Uh, they're going to tell us what the public needs to hear. Correct.
Well, thank you very much. So no further questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Member Becetta. And the chair has none and invites a motion from um the Victorville City Council and um the um boards of directors of the SCLA A and the successor agency to the redevelopment agency.
Councilwoman Gomez would like to make that um as recommended by staff, that motion.
All right, we have a first by um Member Gomez. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and a second by Mayor Potem Irving and discussion on the pending motion, beginning with Member Gomez.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Irving.
No discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Becetta.
No discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, and the chair has none and closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Uh, aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so the uh boards of directors of the um Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the successor agency to the redevelopment agency has taken action in accordance with the uh recommendation laid out on the agenda. Um, uh, and that also includes the city council, of course. All right, so moving on to item number nine. This is amendment uh number one to the construction agreement with B J L Waste Management Services Incorporated, D B A Alpha Omega Plumbing and Septic Service. Mr. Metzler.
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This item is is ba- is just an amendment to an existing contract we have with Alpha Omega Plumbing and Septic Service. We rely on them, along with a a couple of other contractors, um, to provide us um, uh, maintenance-related work to our sewer laterals that connect to our sewer main uh system throughout the city. And in in this particular case, the the appropriation is being sought um in in the amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, I believe it is. Uh, yes, uh, basically to give us uh more flexibility to continue to rely on uh Alpha Omega Plumbing Services uh when we have needs for repairs to the uh the sewer lateral system that we own. Uh, so with that, uh, Mr. Doug Matthews, he's your director of Public Works and Water. He's available for any uh questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metzler. Madam Clerk, the recommendation, please.
At the Honorable City Council, adopt resolution number twenty two dash zero one zero, approving an additional appropriation of a hundred and twenty five thousand for the sanitary sewer fund in the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two annual budget, and approve amendment number one to the construction agreement with V J L Waste Management Services, Inc., D B A Alpha Omega Plumbing and Septic Service, increasing the total annual not-to-exceed amount by a hundred and twenty five thousand to two hundred and twenty five thousand.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to questions for clarification, we're going to begin with Mayor Potem Irving.
Don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Becetta.
No questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
Yes, during the year, um, how typical is it for us to see something of this nature appear in terms of times? Two times, one time?
It it, you know, tha- that's really hard to answer. I'm not exactly sure. There's there's a typical um um way to quantify uh how many times we'd bring it back. This one's being brought back particularly because uh in the case of Alpha Omega, they have routinely been the most competitively priced amongst the three contractors that we have as respondents to the services uh when we need them. And uh, you know, these services, um, if if I can uh explain a little bit, uh, we have our uh sewer mainline system that's basically running through the right of ways. But there's an actual, we call it a sewer lateral, and that's basically the extension off the main line, say, um, to your home, uh, as an example. And a a common uh complaint that we may uh run into that requires uh attention and would require services under one of these three contracts would be, say, a sewer backup may be caused by a root intrusion. A root intrusion. Um, and and so it's more expedient and more cost-effective for us uh to rely on contract services to actually perform that work. When we get that complaint, what typically happens is we will go out and assess. We will go out as staff and develop a scope of work. And then we'll actually take that scope of work and ask the contractors then to to bid um uh and give us a price. Um, what we've run into here is um Alpha Omega in in the original contract has only been appropriated a hundred thousand dollars. The nature of work we have has has been, uh, I I would say fairly consistent. However, they have consistently been the most competitive, and so they've been getting the greater amount of the awards because they've been the most cost-effective when it comes to bidding on those individual projects. So in this particular case, the the appropriation is really being put in place so that we have uh continued flexibility to rely on uh a contractor that's been routinely the most cost-effective in bidding uh the scopes of work.
Thank you. Um, I didn't catch one of the terms, and I wanted to bring it in context. You said that the typical jobs occur, um, and I don't know if you meant to say it that the regular runways, not runway is an airport um term, but it's my understanding that we deal with these types of issues, but it's only happening in the public right of way. I- is that what what you said?
Um, I I'll say it, I'll say it a little bit differently. It's 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 that area that extends from the main line that might be in, say, a street. And since you said runway, let's use driveway instead. Let's let's consider a uh residential home, for example. From the main line that's in the street, there's a lateral that extends up towards, say, the driveway. There there's a point where um the property is either public property or private property. We're responsible for that segment of lateral up until the the home's property line. And so these types of works would be effectively for those laterals that 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 are still i- in our ownership.
Okay, so, um, i- it would have to be assessed if the issue that's taking place in several residential homes happens to be an issue that we can take care of. Um, is that something fairly, I I've run into a lot of individuals giving confirmation that there's an issue, but I never thought of the city as being a potential source of fixing the issue because it's a private property and it's a tree that's within the domain of a private property.
We we would be responsible for what's within our 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 public property. And we have an ability to survey, say, for example, where the backup is occurring. Uh, we have a cameraing system that actually goes into the sewer line and can peek into the lateral, extend in and and actually give us real video to to identify if there's a blockage within our right of way. If it's not, we will work with the property owner and and share that information with them. If it is within our uh right of way, our our public property, then we fix the problem. But if we can diagnose that it's not within our our public right of way, we can certainly refer them to to local contractors to help do the similarly natured investigative work um that the property owner can do on their private property.
Okay, and the next question is, let's see, those confused. Okay, so we, these are not typical expenses, I believe you said. Um, so this expense that we're seeing today is just something that we're potentially standardized, something that we see yearly for this contract?
The these types of works are fairly routine. We we do run into these uh types of uh issues regularly.
Okay, thank you. Have no further questions.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
You're welcome.
All right, and the chair has no questions and invites a motion from the council.
Madam Bear, motion to approve staff recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have it first by uh Member Becetta, a second by Mayor Potem Irving. Going to move on to discussion on the pending motion, beginning with Member Becetta.
No tricks, no technical questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and do you want to have any discussion on the motion?
No discussion.
All right, thank you. Um, Mayor Potem.
No discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
Yes, so just for clarification, uh, I found this topic maybe um a little bit technical for me, but I believe that there's a lot of residents that that could benefit from this information. So maybe understanding how investigative the city can be in helping if there is a blockage with a camera. Hopefully, it's not a enduring process where there's an application, maybe a phone call. But um, I I thank you for that clarification and more of a layman's terms. So I have a little bit more of an understanding that where they're really help the people when it comes to those blockages and so much trouble that neighbors have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez. All right, and I have no discussion. So Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, all right, so the council has taken action in accordance with the recommendation that was presented on the agenda. We're going to move on to item number ten. And this is building seven one seven and seven two eight roof replacement project, uh, number C C twenty two dash zero four seven. Mr. Metzler.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This uh item specifically dealing with two buildings out at the Southern California Logistics Airport where uh roof uh repair, reconstruction, repair, uh, sorry, repair and reconstruction uh need to occur. Uh, building seven one seven and building seven two eight, uh, I'm sorry, um, um, tho- those two buildings are former military buildings, so they have some age to them. Um, and in this particular case, one of the buildings, building seven two eight, is uh the actual headquarters building for SCLA. Uh, but but they both have two um similar scopes. In the case of building seven one seven, it's a leasable building. It requires a repair and replace of thirty thousand square feet of roof area. Seven twenty eight is requiring nineteen thousand square feet of uh repair and replace of roof material. Uh, unfortunately, in this particular case, the bids came in higher. We did go through a public bidding process for this work. The bids did come in higher. So there is a request for an additional appro- appropriation of a hundred and sixty five thousand, which will actually be funded from the airport operations fund. Uh, the author on this item is your airport director, Mr. Eric Ray. Uh, he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
At the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors, approve the award of a standard construction agreement to Universal Coatings, Inc. for building seven one seven and seven two eight roof replacement project, number C C twenty two dash zero four four seven, in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and forty five thousand. And adopt resolution number S C L A A twenty two dash zero zero one, amending the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget, increasing expenditures and fund four five zero by a hundred and sixty five thousand.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, with that said, we're going to move on to technical questions for clarification. This time, we're going to start with Member Becetta.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just have one question for Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray, are both of these buildings already rented out?
I'm sorry. Yes, one of them is completely occupied by a tenant. The other one is our administrative office. It contains airport and BEMAS staff. And then the portion of the building is leased out to two different companies. We had to look at four different entities in the administrative building.
Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank you, Member Becerra. Member Gomez?
Yes, how does the city appraise the need to make reparations of buildings over SCLA versus maybe another another responsibility of the city that we may have? Like this one, we have two. There was a decision that it would be a project. Do we have a CIP type of conditioning to make it a project, or is it just first come, first served? How does that work?
So I think it's important to remember that the airport is a separate airport authority. You're acting in the capacity of an airport authority as opposed to the city right now. So it's a different enterprise fund. It's a different different monies per se. And yes, as part of our annual budget, we do look at a cap. We have a capital program for the airport, and these items were on there. In fact, that's why we're a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars short because we didn't estimate and couldn't foresee those additional costs that happened this year, which were mostly COVID-driven. So we do look at that each year. We present that to you in a budget. How we made the decision was we looked at the buildings that had the worst roof problems. So we've been prioritizing repairs on these old facilities for years. So right now, we're in that process of looking at various roofs. These two roofs were the worst of the ones that need to be addressed right now. Next year, we'll come back to you with some other roofs that need to be done. So we're in a process of upgrading and improving all of the facilities.
Yes, thank you for that information. My follow-up question is, did the SCLA authority use any COVID-related monies probably that we were entitled to, you know, aid with something of this issue since it had something to do with COVID as well?
Not for this project, no. We had no, there's no COVID-related monies involved in this. These are monies that are being reinvested from revenues earned at the airport. So revenues that are brought in by the tenants as part of our business transactions that go into a reserve, and then we're reinvesting funds as need be back into that that building stock that generates the revenue.
Thank you. And I think it was stated that because this is a public project, there was bidding that was open to the public. I presume that part. Is there, since this is an agenda item and it doesn't show that it's publicly enabled, although we know because of the brown egg, it should be. Is public able to watch this and contribute in any fashion as to whether they agree or they opine to any of this?
Well, I think we need to understand that the bidding process was a public bidding process. So we meet the city's code requirements, the city's municipal code for properly bidding this kind of project. So it was vetted with our purchasing department, and it was bid according to those policies.
Thank you. No follow-up questions for that. I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Member Gomez. Mayor Potem Irving?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
You bet. And I have none either. And so the chair invites a motion from the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors.
Madam Mayor, I motion that we follow staff's recommendation or staff's recommendation for SCLA.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Councilwoman Gomez would like to second.
All right, thank you. We have a first by Member Becerra, a second by Member Gomez. We're not going to move into discussion on the pending motion, beginning with Member Becerra.
No discussion.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Irving.
No, thank you.
Thank you, and I have none, and close the discussion period. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so the SCLA-A Board of Directors has taken action in accordance with the recommendation presented on the agenda. Moving on to item number eleven, this is the purchase of light fixtures for ramp light LED retrofit project, number CC two-two dash zero two-six, Mr. Metzler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. At SCLA, we have close to a hundred acres of what we call ramp, which is concrete, concrete pavement, basically, that houses aircraft parking. It's the area that's in between, basically, the airport office, all of the airfield buildings, and it's what is in between them and the actual taxiway and runway system. And we have eight sets of one hundred and fifty-foot poles that basically house a lighting system so that we have visibility at nighttime. And this item very basically is approving the transition, I'm sorry, the replacement of one hundred and seventy-six light fixtures with new LED lights. It'll actually be the type of lighting system that we believe will actually draw less energy, so there should be savings with reduced electricity costs. Also, it's a type of lighting that requires less maintenance than the current lighting system. So with that, again, this item is authored by Airport Director, Mr. Eric Ray. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, very good. Madam Clerk, the recommendation, please.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the purchase of light fixtures for the ramp light LED retrofit project, number CC twenty-two dash zero two-six, from Graybar Electric Company, Inc., and the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. And adopt Resolution Number SCLA-A twenty-two dash zero zero two, amending the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget, increasing expenditures and fund four-five-zero by sixty-six thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to questions for clarification, we're going to begin with Member Gomez.
Yes, would you remind me what item we are, eleven or ten?
Sure, we are on item number eleven.
Okay. Hi, hello?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm just, my agenda has, it's a little bit off in terms of the lining, so I need to. Even though it says eleven, it doesn't give me the title, so I'm looking through. Okay, no, I don't have any questions on the light LED. Thank you.
All right, you betcha. All right, Mayor Potem Irving?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
All right, and Member Becerra?
I just have one question. Mr. Ray, the lights on the ramps, are they kept on sundown to sunup, or only when work's needed to be done on the aircraft on the ramps?
Yeah, it used to be that way. It's no longer done that way. We've now wired a photocell and a timer in series so that they cannot come on during the daytime, and they only operate up to ninety minutes when the mechanic's go over there and literally turn the knob. So we try to control that usage to only when it's needed.
Oh, so that is new. Thank you very much, sir. No, that's it. No further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Becerra, and the chair has none, and invites a motion from the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors.
Councilwoman Gomez would like to move that motion as recommended by staff.
Sure. All right, we have first by Member Gomez and a second by Mayor Potem Irving. Discussion on the pending motion, Member Gomez.
No.
All right, Mayor Potem Irving?
No discussion. Thank you.
Uh huh, Member Becerra?
No discussion.
All right, and the chair has none and closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Irving?
Aye.
Sorry. Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So the SCLA-A Board of Directors has taken action in accordance with the recommendation presented on the agenda. Moving on now to item number twelve, this is Amendment five to the construction agreement with Cal Stripe Incorporated for Airfield Painting Rubber Removal and Paint Removal Project, number CC nineteen dash zero three five dash two. Mr. Metzler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. One of our standard operations out at the airport is to maintain our signs and markings out in the runway and taxiway system. And we're also required to make sure that any buildup of rubber from airplanes landing on the runway is also removed so as to not interfere with markings that delineate the runway as well. And so with that, we regularly will contract with the rubber removal and the actual maintenance and repainting of those signs and markings throughout the runway system. So that's what this amendment does. It does require an additional appropriation of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. This also is being funded from the Airport Operations Fund. So again, the author on this item is your Airport Director, Mr. Eric Ray. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metzler. Madam Clerk, the recommendation, please.
At the Honorable Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors, approve Amendment five to the construction agreement by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Cal Stripe, Inc., and the amount not to exceed a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in support of the Airfield Paint Rubber Removal and Paint Removal Project, number CC nineteen dash zero three five dash two, and adopt Resolution Number SCLA-A twenty-two dash zero zero three for an additional appropriation in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. And now for technical questions for clarification, we're going to begin with Mayor Potem Irving.
Yes, I just have a general question, I guess, because this is, it reminds, it's an amendment, but it reminds me of a change order. When these companies or these construction companies go out to bid and they take an assessment of the scope of work, how do we have, I'm noticing kind of like a pattern. How do we have additional, you know, additional work that needs to be done? They don't make an assessment at the beginning? I'm just curious about it because I'm noticing we're doing a lot of amendments tonight and expanding the scope of work. What's, can you help me?
Sure, that's actually a very good question. The process that we have in place allows us to go out for a completely competitive public works bid. As we have in the case here, this was done in August of eighteen for painting companies. And in this particular case, we made up quantities. So what we're asking the contractor to give us is speculation. Taxiway stripes, runway stripes, the various different components, the de-rubber, the rubber removal, different components, and we issue a contract based to that lower bidder. When we have a case like we do now, where we need it quickly to get back to act, to get out there and get this work done that is more than our fifty thousand, we're able to go back and utilize that already competitively bid process to go for a higher quantity, a higher amount of money. So the process has been, the process has already been put in place. Now we're going back to get a larger quantity of that, of that amount of work that has been bid. The fifty thousand mark, is that a mark that is your city manager's authorized to execute up to? If we go beyond that, we have to come to you for authority to do that, to spend beyond that. And that's what we're asking for tonight, is to spend more than that fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, all right. But I'm just noticing a trend, or it appears to be a trend. And, you know, I would assume that this company is well experienced and would have some knowledge of rubber buildup. That's what I'm, okay, very good.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Member Becerra?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ray, I noticed in the picture, we got the SCLA site map, which is page two-fifty-seven. On the one side, it says three-five, and on the other side, it's one-seven. But only the side of three-five is getting rubber removal, not one-seven?
Yes, ma'am, that's the case. So we pay on a square foot basis for most things. And if you notice on that very drawing, that earth image you looked at, you see the black on the one-seven end. So the airplanes predominantly land on that end. That's where the rubber gets built up. They don't deposit rubber on takeoff. So they typically take off to the north, land to the south. That's how that happens.
Okay, and then notice all the approaches in the apron in front of the parking. All that's just normal cleanup, correct, as the planes are making their turns and everything?
That's right, it is. A lot of it is just worn and deteriorated.
And the one final on the end, on the south side, the one building we have rented out there, they're major users, probably have the same thing, because if you notice, it literally goes to the front door.
I'm sorry, which page is that?
Same, two-fifty-seven. It's a site map.
I think she's talking about the taxiway leading to GE, maybe?
Yes, sir, that's what it is. I didn't know if we were, if we could say what's out there. So yes, the taxiway to GE is the only one getting rubber removal. All the other ones didn't need it.
That one should not, no, it shouldn't be needing rubber removal. The one I've got, my print looks a little different than yours. No, that should just be stripes out there.
Okay. No, no, it didn't say rubber removal, sir. It just said, it said airfield painting. So I was just making sure. Okay, sir, thank you very much. No further questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Member Gomez?
Yes, thank you. Do we anticipate further modification of dollars in anticipation of probably a sixth or seventh amendment for this, this type of work or project?
No, we do. I don't anticipate that happening. At least not this year or next year. Typically, this goes every year to a year and a half or so, so I don't anticipate. It's gonna be a while before we, before we need any markings here.
But Eric, if I might, let's just, let's just fast forward because I think we have an experience doing rubber removal every couple of years. But let's say two years from now, because I don't want to create the wrong impression. If we get to two years from now and need rubber removal, which is very likely, we'll go through the bidding process like we normally do. And if it just so happens that this company again is selected as the lowest bidder, then it's presumable we would amend this contract at that time. But that's presuming a lot of things.
That's correct. Said another way, these contractors here have been qualified as being technically knowledgeable in the FAA schemes of how to paint, what needs to be done. So we would go back to those companies that we have confidence in that have went through that public procurement process, and we would say, give us new numbers. Bid out this specific work, this particular work that we need done right now.
Okay, so I appreciate the clarification. Based on, if we were to place a percentage on the amount of reliance that we place on expertise, I just presume that we just rely on them. But I hope the city of Victorville also kind of has its way of making sure that we don't get taken advantage of. I'm not saying that the vendor or the contractor would. Just for the sake of, you know, the public's expenditures, we're not gifting a public funds, and we're not just relying on someone because they're the most expert. So that's where my question stems. How much do we rely on the experts?
Let me just be real clear with you, Ms. Gomez. There's no contractor that steps a foot, drives a truck onto our airfield without your staff there watching them. That is, it just doesn't happen. You don't let somebody go out on your taxiways and runways without being there. So your staff is watching them. Every single foot of paint that is painted, we're measuring, we're checking. These are quantities that then get confirmed in the field. We measure, everything has to be exact. A six-inch stripe has to be a six-to-point-five, five-point-five inch. Everything is very well defined. It's very precise. There's nothing there that's going to get done without it being absolutely precise. The rest, we have companies that have the equipment, that have the knowledge of how to do it, but we do not allow them to take any shortcuts.
Let me, let me address the, before we even select the contractor. So leading up to this point, we haven't relied on an expert to quantify the scope of work for us that we actually put in the bid. And in fact, we've relied on airport operations staff. Airport operations staff on a daily basis actually goes out and inspect the airfield for a variety of things, including conditions of markings, conditions of signs, conditions of rubber buildup on the runways. And so there's a point in time where through our daily inspections, you get to a point where there's a need, say there's a fading of a line, or there's just buildup where you can't see the runway markings identifying that it's runway one-seven. It's going to be the airport operations officer's work as a part of their inspections to then help us develop the actual scope of work then that we actually take to the public and say, bid this work. So, if you will, the experts in determining the work needing to be done in this particular case is the airport staff.
Thank you for that clarification. Was this specific recommendation based on the advisory circulars on the FAA guidelines or the guides? There's a little bit on the back- There's a little bit on the background in regards to this. That's why I'm asking.
Yes. So the standards we speak of, when I speak of how many feet get painted, how wide, the exact colors, the specifics of our staff watching over the contractor, that is all based out of hard, hard data in the advisory circles, which provides the standards by which we do this work.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is, how often does S L A adorn with paint markings and navigation guidelines when we're considering the paintage or the usage of the runway or any kind of other paved surface? And just may, if I may, the reason I ask that is because we have a, an exude amount of paint being used, or that was my interpretation, higher than normal quantity.
So there's, there's obviously two things that affect that. One is the amount of wear and tear that, that's being caused onto your markings. As, as the other council lady had pointed out, where she saw the, the skid marks, well, obviously the paint underneath there is, can't be seen anymore once it has skid marks over top of it. So the more of that, the facilities being used, the more, the more we're going to have to paint. The other part that affects how often we paint is whether or not we have FAA projects. You may recall, we had the last, last year and two years before that, we had FAA-funded projects to reconstruct portions of runway one, seven, three, five. When we do those projects, we usually scope in additional painting that goes, is not just there, but also in some other generalized areas. So what we try to do, because those are, those are what we call ninety cent dollars typically. Those are, we, we get participation from the federal government. We'll try to use some of that money as much, as much as we can to help in our painting. It's only when we have to use our own money that we come back to you on this because it's not part of a larger project.
Thank you. I appreciate the level of detail. That was, no further questions for me.
Thank you, Member Gomez. And the chair has none and invites a motion from the S L A A Board of Directors.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a first by Member Becerra, a second by Mayor Protem Irving. Discussion on the pending motion, Member Becerra.
No discussion.
Thank you, Member Irving.
And no discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Becerra.
You mean Gomez.
Excuse me, Gomez.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies. All right. And the chair has none and closes discussion on the motion. And Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Becerra.
Hi.
Member Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. So the S L A Board of Directors has taken action in accordance with the recommendation laid out on the agenda. Moving on to item number thirteen, this is the Award of Contract to Air Exchange Incorporated for play movement vehicle exhaust extraction system. Don't know if I said that right, but Mr. Metzger, will you tee up the item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, the council may be generally familiar with this as we first attended a related item on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, where we accepted grant funds basically for this scope of work that, that's before us today. And, and so having accepted the grant, we are now here before you asking that you approve the contract to construct a vehicle exhaust extraction system in the six fire stations that we have throughout the city. So with that, the author on this item is your fire chief, Mr. Jeff Armstrong. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Right, very good. Madam Clerk, the recommendation, please.
That your honorable city council approve the award of contract to Air Exchange, Inc. in the amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fourteen cents for project C C T two-two dash zero seven-two.
All right. Thank you. Technical questions for clarification. We're going to begin with Member Becerra.
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Irving.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And the chair has none and invites a motion from the council.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a first by Member Becerra, a second by Mayor Protem Irving. Discussion on the pending motion, Member Becerra.
No discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
No discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
No, thank you.
Thank you. And the chair has none. Discussion period is closed. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra. Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. So the council has taken action in accordance with the recommendation as we see it on the agenda. We're now going to move on to item number fourteen. This is body worn cameras. This is an informational piece only. And with Mayor Protem Irving's permission, as this was her item, this was her requested item. Mr. Metzger, will you please tee up the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, resulted from a request at the December seventh meeting. Staff brought back this written update as to where we are at and where the county sheriff is at with respect to ultimately implementing body worn cameras altogether. The county sheriff is moving forward. That commitment started both at his level and at the county board of supervisors' level. They're in the process, basically, of having gone from the R F I stage, and they're actually moving into the R F P stage while they're currently actually trying to design or architect a system. I have been advised in a previous meeting with, with the sheriff for budgetary purposes to, to plan to include an expenditure in our upcoming budget to support effectively body worn cameras amongst all of our deputies serving here in Victorville. So with that, I'll yield it back to you. The item is authored by our captain, police captain, Mr. John Wickham. He's certainly available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, very good. So with that said, and again, this is an informational item only. So council members, any questions or comments? And we're going to go ahead and begin with Mayor Protem Irving, since this was her requested item.
Thank you. I only have two questions. In the update, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the answer, when will this be implemented? I understand it's underway. The last time we had an update, it was underway. And so are we looking at, I thought it would be implemented by the winter? Where we're approaching spring, are we looking towards the summer? When will this, when, do you have any, do you have any information about when? And then the last question is, what can we do as a council to hasten the implementation? So two very basic questions.
Certainly, we, we want to deploy these cameras sooner than later. Unfortunately, I can't give you an exact day or month or exact time other than the department is going through the process. And, and I think it's important to understand too that the San Bernardino sheriff, it's not just rolling out the cameras for just Victorville City, but it's for the entire San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department countywide. So with that being said, there comes a lot of challenges geographically with some outline stations, some of the data, the storage. The technology has greatly improved since twenty seventeen when we did a pilot program, actually, that I was part of in Apple Valley. And we really liked the cameras. The challenge there was the data storage and downloading information and redaction. Going forward, the technology has greatly improved. And so they're at the R F P and I believe seven or eight of the vendors have responded. And we might hopefully be involved in a, in a pilot program. And I've certainly volunteered Victorville City to, to deploy that if, if it comes to that, as far as testing the equipment.
Okay, so may I just get an understanding? I know that in the past, cost has been an issue. It sounds like with the improvements in technology, that may no longer be the, the paramount issue. I understand that the infrastructure is, is an issue, particularly as it relates to the entire county. But for a city like Victorville, don't we have the infrastructure in place where we can begin implementation? And I heard you, I heard you, you say, you said that you would be very interested in bringing a pilot program to our community. So that's good news. Thank you. Are those two issues still on the table as things that we need to work out or we're?
I, I think as far as Victorville City goes, we're going to be okay as far as capturing the data and with, you know, being able to. And, and again, I'm not a real techie person, so I don't talk out of school here. But with the cloud and things like that, I know in Apple Valley, we had some service issues and hotspots. And as we would drive the patrol cars through certain areas of the city, it would just grab the information and download it. Well, then we ran into a storage problem. But I think now we've overcome a lot of those issues. Now it's just trying to find the right vendor that's compatible and that we can integrate with our systems.
I understand. Well, Captain Wickham, I want to tell you, that's good news. Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Member Becerra. Questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Captain Wickham, thank you very much for this. Are any of the stations run by San Bernardino County Sheriff, are any of them permanently fixed with body cameras?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time. It's going to be a free for all when they do get the cameras or you guys are ordering for the whole entire county of all the stations? Or is it going to be first come, first served? How are they going to get, who gets the cameras first?
Well, cer- certainly I think they're gonna, you know, identify, you know, the vendor that, that's not only compatible, but that can, you know, certainly outfit the, the quantity that we're going to be looking at as far as. So hopefully the deployment and, and, you know, the cameras are on hand and the deputies can be outfitted right away.
Okay. Okay, sir. Thank you very much. No further questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Member Gomez.
Yes. Does CDC have cameras in its facilities in terms of body cams?
CDC, I'm not sure what.
Yeah. So I was in conversation with a couple of members and we're talking about body cams and they just uttered, well, CDC has cameras. They, they have cameras. So it's my impression that he was talking about body cams. I didn't specify, so I figured if I asked the captain, he might probably know. But if you don't, it's fine.
I don't know what you're referring to as far as CDC goes.
Yeah, I think CDC, there's a correctional department or there's probably one of the jails. I don't know which. I don't know if it's referring to one of the jails and it's called a CDC. He didn't say West Valley or Glenn Helen or any of that term. Then I figured the CDC might have been an internal term that I just wasn't familiar with.
We have CDC, which is our central detention center. It's, it's a jail in San Bernardino located
Okay.
next to headquarters.
Okay, so they don't have body worn cameras?
No.
Okay. And what does the term compatibility, compatibility mean? You've been using that word as compatibility. We would get cameras and we're waiting for vendors?
In terms of compatibility, is the particular vendor and their product that's compatible with some of our existing, you know, computers that are installed in the patrol vehicles and obviously the data system that the departments, that our department uses.
Well, will there be a secondary pilot program in Victorville in terms of body cams? Is that what we're waiting on?
I believe that depending on who the vendor is, will determine if there's going to be a second pilot program from the one from back in twenty seventeen in Apple Valley and Highland.
Okay. Will the fifty-seven cameras that we already had in Victorville that are placed strategically be used part of the supplemental piloting program or is that just completely distinct?
Those are completely separate.
Okay.
Camera systems.
And will the county agency of the sheriff be implementing any policies of abuse or misuse of body cams and usage of the equipment when they're doing an investigation? Or has that been considered?
Oh, that's certainly being considered. And some, those are some of the big hurdles to, to look at in terms of, you know, when we activate and deactivate and redaction and, and things like that.
Can Measure P aid in any of the costs for body worn cameras on deputies? If so, how much money can we allocate if that were a possibility?
I, I leave.
I, I can take that one.
Okay.
I, I think a simple answer is yes. The, the way I envision the cost to be passed through to Victorville would be through its Schedule A. And just as you're, you're familiar with Schedule As that we approve on an annual basis, Schedule A is going to identify everything from deputies to vehicles. This will be another line item on, on the Schedule A and likely be a unit price associated with each of the body worn cameras. I say yes because it's that Schedule A in the aggregate that's funded both by general fund and Measure P.
In terms of funding, is there a possibility that we can apply for grants that would aid for some of those costs? Because Measure P does come out of the general fund unless we have a game plan for that.
I, I suspect we could. I'm not familiar enough. We'd probably have to research what's available. And I suspect the sheriff themselves, if they haven't already gotten grants to fund them to this point, they, they likely also could. It's something we can certainly look at to, to try to defray any costs.
Okay. There's verbiage within the report. So I was asking to see if there's some type of interpretation from staff or yourself. The terms wireless coverage data in the counties, that's the verbiage, wireless. And there's, I don't know if there's going to be difficulties, but since we're going to be using that geographically specifically, thank you.
Did, did you understand where her, her question was going, Mr. Metzger? If not, we'll just go ahead and move on.
I, I, I can't make that out. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. All right. So I just, thank you, Member Gomez, by the way. Um, just a quick question and I, and I apologize for asking this now instead of in advance. But you've referred to the redaction a few times. Is that, is that something that takes place before information is, is stored in the cloud or wherever it's ultimately going to be stored?
Exactly. So for example, if, if you, maybe there's a call for service that is not, you know, you know, a criminal investigation that doesn't rise to the level of, you know, capturing that information. And because we don't want to violate, obviously, somebody's, you know, rights type of situation. So, so some of that material is, is, will be. And I, and I think there's some technology involved with that that can help us out in terms of deciphering between, you know, what we need to retain and what can, what would be redacted.
Okay. And I would imagine as all of this goes forward and ultimately gets rolled out, there's going to be probably a huge book of policies and procedures on who makes those kind of decisions and, and just implementation of the whole program.
Absolutely. There should certainly be policies for the department, for the deployment, for the use. There's, there's quite a bit actually involved. And I know our department spent probably an enormous amount of time looking at other agencies and, and what they're doing and what they're using. So we can roll out the latest and greatest and the best that we have. And, and I think here soon, especially as we get into, to going into next fiscal and preparation for that, we'll probably hear from, from the sheriff and as far as costs and, and Schedule As and things like that.
Okay. Because I mean, we're, we're in year five of this. So I'd imagine a lot of that work has already been, has already been underway. So that when, when we do have the infrastructure needed and we've got that the, the, the best vendor for this will be able to move forward with this. This is clearly something that our community has been asking for, for some time. So this, I'm very thankful for the good news that we're getting closer and closer. And I'm sure our community appreciates it. And we appreciate the report, Captain Wickham and Mr. Metzger, very much. All right. With that said, again, this was an informational piece only. So we can go ahead and move on to item number fifteen, and that's the city manager reports. Mr. Metzger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. You had just a few items. First, if you haven't seen it already, our Public Works Department has, through contract, completed the upgrade to our Seventh Street Arch. It actually looks pretty amazing. It's got some really nice nostalgic features built into it and even looks more amazing at night. So if you haven't had a chance to go check it out, please do. On the engineering side of the house, we have actually started construction on Seventh Avenue and Arrowhead Drive. So that'll be a project that lasts close to six months. So if you depend on that route. whether it's going home or coming to work, might want to find an alternate route. On the environmental program side, we have another shred fest and compost giveaway coming up. That's gonna be on Saturday, February fifth, from eight AM to noon. It's gonna be over at the Murph, which is at seventeen hundred, seventeen thousand Abbey Lane. On the planning side, we just have received streamlined, we received and streamlined for administrative approval, another project that we're referring to as Project Faring. It's a four hundred and seventy-six thousand square foot industrial facility, also at SCLA. So we're continuing to see increased demand for industrial space out there. And then we still have a lot under construction, the Amazon Building. The walls are up. If you want something really cool to see, now's a good time to, to drive out at the airport and just see. You're gonna see a lot of buildings literally just coming out of the ground right now. Madam Mayor, that's all I have at this time.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number sixteen. This is discussion of possible action regarding upcoming agenda items, and we'll begin with a, a member Becerra.
Madam Mayor, if I may get some latitude on this.
Sure.
I don't think it's gonna be an upcoming, but I just want to let, last meeting was discussed stuff that was happening out at the homeless shelter. Items that was happening that we didn't know about, we were finding out about it on the back end. I just wanted to let the public know, it's not an agenda's item, because now we've been getting updates almost daily of things on how it's going on out there. If our employees maybe felt that we put them under the microscope, we didn't. It didn't, it was no fault of the city of Victorville of what was happening out there, because on the backside, things were happening that we were, were very unaware of. So to the employees out there, the employees that run that, my apologies, from here on forward, work well done. And that's why there's nothing on the agenda that we need to bring. So thank you, Madam Mayor. That's it.
Remember Becerra, and I, and I, and I so appreciate your having taken the time to do that. I, I was actually going to say something very much similar. I, I, I know that I was rather forthright in the last meeting, and I want to make sure that our, our employees know that we very much appreciate them, and there was just a whole lot happening at once. And, and it, it was not a reflection, to my view, on our staff at all. And I want to make sure that they know that they're appreciated very much, and the city is, is handling this very well. So, Member Becerra, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You betcha. Member Gomez, any requests?
Yes. Uh, let's see, so I'm, I want to place it on the record, whether it gets a second or not. It's just, as long as it's on the record, I would like to see within the next month, in one of our general meetings, some language that we place on the agenda that says that the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department would place an assurance, for example, set a policy implemented in the department's manual policy and procedures, that any abuse of unitizing the ALPR systems, including any body cams, and acting outside of the, the scope or the score, the course of investigation would be subject to discipline and in some cases termination.
Thank you, is there, I, I, I don't know that we have the authority to do that, but, but because we don't preside, so to speak, we don't have authority over the Sheriff's Department per se, but I'll go ahead and ask for a second. Hearing no second, the motion fails. Did you have anything else, Member Gomez?
No, that was all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Irving?
Uh, yes, I just want to echo the sentiments of councilperson Becerra regarding the supportive staff at the homeless shelter. My concern was that we didn't have enough security to take care of whatever issues were occurring. In addition to that, I do have a question. I know that at the last council meeting, you wanted us to entertain chapter nine of the Policy and Procedures Manual. Is that correct?
The council gave direction to the City Manager and City Attorney to look to see if any revisions were necessary in that chapter, I believe, as it related to boards, commissions, and outside agencies. There was some ambiguity in the policies that's currently written.
Right, did that occur?
No, there, I, I'm assuming they're working on it behind the scenes. It hasn't come back.
Oh, okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is because there, there's this recurring issue that occurs, and I don't, I don't, oh, well, first of all, before I get into that, I want to have good news first. I want to thank staff for putting together the comprehensive list of contact numbers that, you know, citizens could contact regarding COVID, and people were very happy with that, so I want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to those that sent me the link for the COVID home kits. Now, the, the, now let me get into this other issue and then, and
on a little bit off, but we're, we're actually on request for agenda items.
Oh, okay. You know what? I will, um, I will, I will hold on and I will fashion my comments as an agenda request on, on the next meeting, okay? Thank you.
All right. Uh, and I don't have any requests. And so now we're gonna move on to item seven, seventeen, which is Councilmember Reports. And we'll begin with Member Gomez.
Yes, absolutely. Just for the general public, it's my job and my duty to always do like the grassroots motivation of letting people know that the city of Victorville is indeed there to serve their needs. It doesn't matter the need that they may have. So I've been very proactive in that since I don't spend so much time in the committees as my colleagues do. I have a lot of leverage to meet people one-on-one, and I appreciate that each one of us has a role. I've been meeting people out who have needs for Bureau services, and there are certain contacts. And as always, the public needs us, and every, every different role that we take upon, whether one may see it as a advantage or a disadvantage, I, I, I am grateful for my colleagues because each one of us is definitely doing the work of God, as God has provided us to do this. And I can say it in different ways and different fashions, but as many of my colleagues, I'm out there, one-on-one, on doors, inside activities, doing things with them, with children, and I'm not gonna elaborate anymore. This is just a different way of, the scope of my duty to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez. A member Becerra?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we had our first VVTA meeting, in the sense now that everybody's back on Zoom. So for the public that would like, that follows all of these different boards, double check their websites. VVTA, MDA, QMD, both are in Zoom meeting only. You can log on just like here. And when it's gonna go now, it's a month-to-month basis of when we'll meet back in person, but please log on and listen to our meetings. Thank you. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Very good. And Mayor Protem Irving?
Aye, yes, thank you very much. I wanted to say that I appreciate Captain Wickham's report. I agree with Mr. LaPlante. We do need our deputies to wear body worn cameras, not only for the citizens, but also for the deputies as well. In addition to that, I, what I wanted to bring up is that there is a recurring issue happening in the community with regard to organizations trying to get letters of recognition and proclamations and so forth. So at the next council meeting, I would like for the council to entertain reexamining chapter eight of the council proceed, policies and procedures. In addition to that, I want to say thank you. I'm glad that we are cameoing or highlighting Black History Month. I would like to see us do the same for Hispanic history or Hispanic heritage, Native American heritage, Women's Heritage, or Women's Month, and Asian-American, all of the, all of us, because we are a community that is inclusive. And so with that, I say goodnight.
All right, and so for my reports, just wanted, you know, to piggyback on Member Becerra's comments, so a lot of, a lot of the outside agencies are now back completely on Zoom because of the, the variant. And so, but, but, but VVWR did just have in collaboration with Energia and Southwest Gas, a kind of a, a ribbon cutting, if you will, in celebration of its renewable natural gas project. It's a huge collaboration, and it's really gonna help, you know, us in our efforts toward meeting the requirements that we're gonna soon have to deal with when it comes to SB thirteen eighty-three. So that's a, that's a collaboration. It's really gonna benefit our, our region for many, many years to come. And just wanted to thank all of those organizations. And same thing with Southern, excuse me, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and the other outside agencies. We're all meeting via Zoom again, so if anyone wants to attend, they can certainly tap into that online. And with that said, that concludes our business for, for the evening. And if there's any member, council members that are in City Hall, please vacate the premises within ten minutes so that they can be cleaned and secured from the evening. With that said, everyone, thank you for a lovely meeting, very productive meeting. Have a wonderful evening, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you to the employees. Thank you.
Yeah.